Let it stay open because we are allowing at least 15 people. Good afternoon, Williamsburg County citizens. We are here at our special call council meeting. In response to COVID-19, in our attempt to keep everyone safe, we are utilizing three mediums of communication, which includes social media, teleconference line. Anyone who needs to call in on the teleconference line, that phone number is 1-877-309-2073. They can enter the access code of 59080589. We also allow 15 people, no more than 15 people, be in attendance at our meeting at this time. IT people, do we have anyone on social media at this time?
Yes, there's two callers. I'm about to connect them.
So we have two callers on the teleconference and how many people on the Facebook Live?
Have, looks like 14 currently.
At this time, we do not have anyone in the building or in the audience at this point. At this time, again, I've already taken the role of seeing who's on our social media. Now, members of council, can I get you all to do another sound check? I'm going to start with District One. District Two.
District Two present.
District Three.
District Three present.
District Four. District Five. District Six. Councilman Floyd is in the building. District Seven. Councilman Lemon is also in the building. We're going to conduct our, and just for instructional purposes, members of council, we're conducting county business. I ask again that you identify your district and your name. We will be using a roll call voting system. Once your district is called, you will either say yea or nay to whatever the question is. I'm going to go ahead and call the regularly scheduled meeting to order the special call. The order was scheduled for today, July 9, 2020. The invocation will be done by Councilwoman Wilson.
Good day, Father, our God. Thank you once again for allowing us to assemble. We ask you, dear Lord, to bless us with life, health, and strength. We ask you, dear Lord, to look upon those who are affected by this COVID-19. We pray, oh Lord, that you will deliver them and bring us all out of this pandemic. Then, dear Lord, we ask you to look upon this meeting and bless us so that we'll be able to do your will and the best will for our people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our first order of business is emergency ordinance number 2020-03. Williamsburg County declares a public health emergency in response to the public safety threat of the novel coronavirus COVID-19, requiring individuals to wear face covering in certain circumstances and matters related to their to effect of July 13, 2020. We need a motion. Let the register, the councilwoman District Seven has, has done the motion. We need a second.
Second. District Three.
Any discussion?
Is this, Madam Supervisor, District One, is this, what are the, what are the fines for not wearing the mask?
Within the ordinance, there is a $25 fine for not, and that is a civil penalty for not wearing the mask. For not wearing a face cover.
How about for the, how about for the businesses?
You said for the businesses? It's $25 in general, and as I scroll through it, Mr. Jenkinson, if you'd like to add anything. It's just $25 if you're guilty of a civil infraction punishable by a fine or not more than $25. I can't hear you. You're on mute, Mr. Jenkinson.
Yes, ma'am. I heard, I heard, I heard.
He's, he was talking, Mr. Lee, just so you can get a little bit more clearly. Go ahead, Mr. Jenkinson.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. Now what, now what is the question?
Mr. Lee wanted to find out in reference to what is, does, how does this affect the businesses? Or what is the businesses if there is a fine tied into the businesses? Am I correct, Mr. Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the fine would be levied against anyone not having the mask if the businesses. They would be fined as well as the business and the customers would likewise be fined.
Mr. Lee, he, he motioned. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I mean, it was a, it was a fine in there of $100. Was that for the businesses?
That says, any person who fails to comply with section one of the ordinance shall be guilty of a civil infraction punishable by a fine of not more than $100 each day of the continuing violation of this ordinance. Shall be considered a separate and distinct offense.
That answers it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Are there any other discussions?
Madam Supervisor, is the ordinance published online where citizens can read it? The reason I say that, I think it's important they understand what it applies to, and what I understand it applies to all persons entering grocery stores and pharmacies. And it applies to all employees of restaurants, bars, retail establishments, along with grocery stores and pharmacies. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But it's published where the citizens have any questions, they can look at it online and read it.
Yes, if it is passed, it will be published. Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
My question is this. How about a convenience store? Does that constitute sales? Do we need clarify by saying that includes convenience stores or excludes convenience stores?
So are you saying that you need to add that into the ordinance? But I believe it covers a broad array of information in the ordinance. Correct?
Yes.
That's a retail establishment. Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Lemon.
I think that was my understanding that it did cover all the convenience stores.
Yes. Under the office of retail establishments that are primarily sell food but may also sell other convenience and household goods. Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Ready.
District, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes, and those opposed will signify by saying no. I'm going to call you off by districts. District One.
No.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four. District Five. District Six.
Yeah.
District Seven. You guys have it. It is so ordered for the emergency ordinance number 2020-03. Again, this is a 60-day emergency ordinance. Notice that it's only imposed for 60 days. Thank you. The next order of business is first reading of ordinance number, the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the sale of two parcels, TM, tax map ID number 08-015-159 and 08-015160 owned by Williamsburg County, located at 301 North Main Street, Hemingway, South Carolina, formerly known as the Lighthouse Rehab Center, to include the two lots with building and improvement located there of, thereon in accordance with the terms and conditions of this ordinance. We need a motion for first reading.
Motion.
District One.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And District Six, we have a second?
Second.
Second for District Six. The next order of business. Yes, sir?
Time for a question.
During first reading, you don't have to give a question.
I, I do it after, after this is over. That's right. That's good.
Yes, sir. All right. The next order of business, motion is carried for first reading. So the next order of business, Supervisors Report. Take a second and pull that out. Due to the fact that we are having a increase in numbers in our state as well as within county government, effective July 16, county government will limit the public access to our facilities. This is to protect not only our workforce but to also protect our citizens due to the increased numbers of this virus, this pandemic. There will be representatives in the offices in each office from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday to answer your questions and to take phone calls and to answer your emails. Having to utilize or access the facility will be on a case by case, case by case. And in the event that you do need to access the, the building to conduct county business, then you will be allowed at that point to make an appointment and to access the facility. We will be waiving any of the charges for the online convenience fees that it would cost you to continue to pay your taxes online. The Water Department will still take payments through the drive-through services. We strongly encourage our citizens to use other means of paying your bills and conducting county business. A detailed plan of how to conduct your business will be published on the county's website. Also, immediately following this council meeting, I will take answers, questions and answers on a live Facebook feed so that it'll give the citizens a better understanding of how we're going to conduct this business. So I state again, county government will not be closed. We will just be allowing the access, the public access to the facility. We also are having COVID testing, COVID-19 testing at King Street Senior High School parking lot. It will be Tuesday, 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Want to make sure that those who are working have the opportunity to come in and get tested. Again, that's Tuesday from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. That is an MUSD as well as Senator Ronnie Savs sponsoring this event. Also, the next day that we will be having it at the King Street Senior High School will be on Thursday from 10:00 to 3:00. Again, I, I encourage our citizens to get there a half an hour before closing because they usually begin to shut the doors 30 minutes before. Again, this is an opportunity for you to receive free testing. You do not have to live in Williamsburg County to get the testing done. You do need to have your identification with you in order to get, to get your screening done. It takes about three minutes or so a vehicle, but try to get out and get the testing done. Our next order of business is our executive session. We need a motion.
Madam Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Wayne Lambert to the Aaron Nautics Commission to replace Mr. Irvin Lambert. Irvin died in a plane crash some, sometime back.
Okay. So tell me the, so I have, I have the name and everything already together for you, Mr. Miller. And also, Mr. Floyd has seconded your nomination.
Thank you.
I think you said, what was the last name again, Mr. Miller?
Lambert. Yeah.
Right. All those in favor of allowing Mr. Lambert to serve on the Airport Commission, please signify by saying aye. And again, I will be districts for roll call purposes. District One. Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four and five. Six. Seven. The motion is carried. Another nomination for the Airport Commission. No one else at this time? All right. We need a motion to go into the executive session in accordance with 30-40-70 and economic development presentation. We need a motion to go on executive session.
Don't move, Madam Supervisor. District number two.
Second. District number three.
All right. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Hearing none. District One, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye to go into executive session or nay. District One.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four. Five. Six.
Aye.
Seven. We're going to receive, it is so ordered, we are moving into executive session. But please, those who are on Facebook Live, please stay tuned. We are going into executive session.
See the button. You're going to have to click join, okay?
Members of council, members of council, when you see the join button, pop up, please hit the button to join the session conference. Yeah. Jeff, are we supposed to hit leave?
Hold up. No, no, no. Stay on. I'm setting it up for you.
Okay.
Y'all should see a join on your screen.
Aight.
Mr., Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Hit join on your screen.
Hit what?
Hit join on your screen to go into executive session. You came back out, Mr. Lee. Let me see if I can put you back in.
Well, please check it wrong. Hey. What did you do? How about you? Amen. Yeah. No, we don't know. We didn't. I'm talking, we didn't cut that down. That's not, that's somebody else. They got, Quick Stop's got somebody to cut that.
All right, Miss Lynn, I'll put you back in the room. Hit join. Join audio. Connect audio, Jeff. Yes, I need him to connect the audio because he can't talk. Click connect audio. Mr. Joe. Mr. Joe, click connect audio. Mr. Joe, can you hear me? Because they're in the breakout room where you are. Mr. Joe, can you hear me? You need to connect the audio. You see a button that says connect audio? Can you touch the screen? All right, you're on. Now, when I click assign you, you gotta click join, okay? Now click join. Join the breakout room.
Well, I'm gonna talk to the Trump supporters for a minute. And what this Donald Trump's can't think about, he's a race baby.
As our members begin to join us back, we are back live on Facebook. He will give us just a moment to allow the members to resume, uh, resume the normal council session. Listen some folks.
It gives you an opportunity to leave, but if you don't, it's got ten seconds left before it kicks you out.
Okay. Alright, alright, looks good. Hey, members of council, I think we have enough of us in here, uh, we need a motion to return to the special call meeting.
So move, Madam Supervisor, District, District three.
Second, District seven, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor for returning to the normal or the special call council meeting, please signify by saying aye or nay, as I call your districts, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Alright, um, in regards to the executive set, the executive session item, um, regarding economic development presentation, there was no action taken. At this time, again, no action taken. Let's go ahead, and I need a motion for a German.
So move, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor for a German, please signify by stating aye or nay, as we call your districts, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We are a German, thank you.